Welcome to Let's Talk Medicine Hat with Scott and Ian. Welcome Scott.
Welcome Ian, happy to be here again.
So January the 6th Medicine Hat City Council only went for forty-five minutes, not four and a half hours.
Yeah, well, I guess you get the budgets out of the way and the escort by law and all the important things. And spending four point one million dollars an hour after the budget was passed for overages for the wastewater residuals plant, you probably don't have much left to talk about, so.
Well, they did manage to find, they did manage to get tangled up in the triannual budget process. Within half an hour of starting to talk now, councillor McGrogan brought forward that if I paraphrase his questions and his motion was he wanted to know every four months how much money had been moved between budgets and budgets and reserves and when they would know if the city had an actual budget surplus.
Yeah, and I think that was related to the the budget amendment policy number zero one eight three that they did pass that night. Essentially allowing the city manager in emergencies to reallocate the budget for certain things. So it was it wasn't a super detailed policy, but it did say that failing to plan for expenditures did not constitute an emergency, which was very nice to see that. It talked also about the the power plant, essentially emergencies there that would be related to to the budget for that as well. And yeah, there was a councillor McGrogan did bring up that instead of, as the policy said, that they would get a yearly update, that they wanted it to be part of their triannual, I think included in their audit update. So yeah, there were some unnecessary comments that it might confuse the people by a couple of councillors, but it did wind up passing amend as amended, doing that triannually. So they talked about, you know, if they move money in and out based on grants and stuff like that, it might confuse the masses. But I think, you know, footnotes are easy to put into reports and I'm sure the city having to generate a lot of reports, that staff could easily do that. And I think the city manager accepted that as well. And she did, she didn't push back on that amendment at all. And it passed fairly fairly quickly unanimously as well.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it does make sense because I mean, even in the private sector, they have budget reviews every quarter, if not more often, just to make sure everybody is being proper stewards of the corporate purse. That Monday night I thought was interesting too, is they started to use the word deficit.
Shocking.
I immediately thought of you the first time it came up. The other thing I thought was interesting too was they kept referring to the municipal funding or the municipal fund. That's the taxpayer.
Yes.
And they are very adept at calming the conversation.
Yeah, I think we wind up, like, we always say words have meaning. And when, you know, we were shocked that they stopped talking about budget gaps and deficits. And maybe that was in response to councillor McGrogan and councillor Sharps trying to reduce the budget in the final deliberation on December sixteenth before they did actually pass it. So hopefully this changes the theme or the narrative going forward and we start to talk more directly about these things more honestly and openly.
So I mean, the taxpayers of Medicine Hat are gonna have to start paying more attention to how the city is financially operated because we could quite easily, thanks to our friends down south, wind up with another version of the National Energy Program and kill basically the island gas business in Western Canada. And at that point, we don't have a big enough reserve to get us out of the hole.
Yeah, I don't think that'll be the the fault of the Americans. Prime Minister Trudeau, as one of his responses to President-elect Donald Trump's proposed twenty-five percent tariffs is that he would then tax energy exports, which would of course hit Alberta, Saskatchewan and some other provinces as well, but not to the extent that Alberta and Saskatchewan would get. So I think that blame would solely be on the Prime Minister of the day, which apparently might change by March nineteenth, we'll see, or ninth, I think it the headline I saw the other day. So yeah, I mean, we are in a very dangerous situation economically. And I think for the individual citizens, financially, personally, they, I think, they, we are are in trouble. We've, we've got a pro rogue parliament, so we can't pass any acts to defend against these tariffs which could come in January twentieth at one P M. after the inauguration. And we're prorogued to the twenty-fourth of March federally. So I think the city needs to to watch and see in many regards what happens in the United States.
Yes.
Whether it's the terrorists, whether it's the massive deregulation, whether it's their reduction in taxes that will bring even more investment to the United States. I think they also need to look at what's going to happen environmentally, because I think President Trump will probably do a lot of deregulation. And I think countries like Canada and other nation, energy producing nations, will have to pay attention to those in order to be competitive. And it could have some very positive effects for our energy production through the power plant and and through our our gas production and distribution. So we may not face quite the environmental crunch requiring massive changes to our energy production. We may still, we don't know. It's gonna take a while. We probably should have a federal election this October. I think that's still impossibly up in the air. We don't know. But a lot of big things happening, certainly in the States, certainly in Ottawa. And they're gonna have major effects on Canadians, but as well as citizens of Medicine Hat.
Well, the thing I'm lucky that is there's, you know, the the devil for any corporate is an unstable economy. And now we're looking at even more instability amongst I mean, we have a federal government that's not doing anything in chaos. We've got renegade federal government departments implementing legislation that's not being passed.
Are you talking about the Canada Revenue Agency?
Oh, is that who it is? And this, this, I mean, we have a lame duck federal government. To all intents and purposes, we have a lame duck government in the United States because bureaucrats don't make changes until there's a politician to blame.
Nor should they.
Nor should they. That's correct. Yeah, there's all these nobody can, nobody can give a straight answer to what's going on. I kind of lost my track here. But it behooves city council and with the support of city administration to, I think at this point, we need to pull back from any significant expenditures that aren't what's the term they use these days, core business? Like, let's pick up the garbage, generate the electricity, plow the streets, sweep the streets in May. But all of the other goodies, and I mean, some of the big ticket items like the Stampede. What was the other big item on the, this isn't included in the budget list?
Yeah, so the Stampede Grandstand is not included. The Halo quarter million dollars per year for the next six years, I believe, is not included. There is a, I think, a transformer substation that is not included. There's a whole raft of of other items as well, not included in the the budget that was passed on December sixteen.
Yeah, so yeah, I
which, by the way, was scheduled to be eleven and a half million dollar deficit plus reduction in our reserves and and taking on some debt as well. And then we still haven't factored in the four point one million from the, that was passed like an hour and fifteen minutes after the budget for the overages by the
water treatment.
Residuals facility. So that I believe was going straight to reserves. So taking our two hundred and fifty-three million dollar reserve projection for twenty twenty-five down to two hundred and forty-nine. So that would in theory, take our twenty thirty-two projection of seventy-three million dollars, so less than a third of our current reserves should take that down to just under sixty-nine million dollars. So we, we keep spending, we keep bringing on debt. And I think it's something that citizens are concerned about. And I think more citizens need to be concerned about, especially if you want to live here for, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years, if you want to retire here. I think you want a strong city with with strong reserves that can actually balance a budget and hasn't since at least twenty-ten, as we talked about the graph that we showed in our last episode, it's probably several years before that when we first started running deficits. We probably need to do an access to information on that. So if, I don't know if Nicole Frey's group would want to take that up for us. So we, because we hate paperwork, right?
Yes. Yeah, we'd rather shoot guns and ride horses. The other interesting, I mean, this morning's newspaper, right at the top of the fold, that rent has gone up in Medicine Hat by twenty-seven percent. Apparently is it a nine hundred square foot bachelor studio apartment, which is a bedsitter, is eleven hundred dollars a month. Now, I know the city has no control over that. And that seems to be why especially the Medicine Hat Commusing Housing Authority is struggling mightily to get more affordable housing.
Yeah, well, control and influence are two related yet separate things. So all levels of government frankly affect our housing. So whether it's the feds bringing in far too many immigrants, more than our cities can support with with housing and our provincial provinces can support with healthcare and education and transportation and all those other related things. But if you, any, any level of government with their policies can affect the cost of living, whether it is rent. So property taxes in Medicine Hat, that would be something that they can control, right? The permitting process, how efficient it is or inefficient, and how much the permits cost. And different, different things affect the cost of living outside of just the rent. But twenty-seven percent in three years is significant. And we know that since Prime Minister Trudeau took over, that housing costs and rent as well have have essentially doubled. The leader of the opposition has pointed that out steadfastly for the last couple of years. But I think cities have an ability to affect that as well. And it's, you know, whether it's a development process, opening up things, zoning, all kinds of things affect it. And they can't just get off the hook for it.
Yeah.
It's, it's not that it's not their fault, that's, they they have a share of the blame as well. And they have some ability to improve that.
What else did you notice on Monday night?
Well, it was short, so we were out of there quick. We had time for a coffee, which was nice. It was interesting that councillor Sharps brought forward a motion to review the last outstanding
sanctions against
Sanction, yes, I love that word, sanction, against the mayor. So that will, I believe, be brought up at the next council meeting to be ratified or whatever, and then be dealt with in closed council. It would have been a very interesting, probably a lively debate, because they did go into closed council after Monday night's meeting. So I'm not sure what was being discussed there, but.
On their agenda, it was down as integrity commissioner. There were two very serious looking gentlemen dressed like Supreme Court lawyers came wandering in after we were basically asked to leave because it was now closed.
Okay.
And I know the mayor mentioned that he, they still had a couple of hours of closed meeting.
Yeah, that's interesting. I wonder if that is at all related to the provincial inspection that the city did request after the big dust-up with the with the mayor.
Could be, I mean, that's
Because integrity, that's a, that's a very important word.
It's integral.
Yeah, and and having a special meeting over integrity. That's gonna be a couple of hours. That sounds like something untoward, may have happened, or or may be happening, so.
Yeah, we'll have to wait and see. That pretty much does it, my friend, unless there's something else you have.
Well, they, they did pass that that policy for the emergency spending.
Yes.
What else did we cover that night? Council, they did the amending to the policy. And they also directed city administration to prepare and present educational material on the city's reserves and reserve policies and bylaws. And I think this is a discussion that you and I had about the various reserve funds
Right.
that are created and used. So we, we talk about reserves. So the reserves I've been mostly talking about on our show has been our our supposed liquid reserves that they can draw from. But then there are other reserves out there like money set aside for oil and gas.
Oh, yeah. Capital reserves, operating reserves, heritage saving reserve. There's, I believe, is there a well abandonment reserve?
Yeah, and that's what I was talking about, the oil and gas, the remediation for those things. So there, those, I think, a number of the reserves that you talked about would be what we would refer to as encumbered.
Yeah.
That, yes, we have them, they're sitting there, but they are spoken for. They are earmarked, for lack of a better term, for for certain either projects or legal requirements.
Yeah, the city refers to them as restricted and non-restricted.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
A term we're familiar with in our other hobby. So far, they don't have a prohibited.
Yes.
And I think that's the thing too. I mean, the city is sitting on, I'm guessing here, somewhere around seven hundred million dollars in reserves. But I think close to, if I'm guessing here, somewhere close to five hundred and fifty million is restricted.
Yes.
So it's set aside and they can't touch it and leaves them about a hundred and fifty million, which is what is that, two?
Well, I think they they projected two hundred and fifty-three million in the unrestricted or liquid reserves.
Yeah.
And that's now gonna be two hundred and forty-nine million. So it's, so there were some questions by councillors. I think councillor Sharp actually came up with the motion or inspired it. I know it was a very interesting exchange with with councillor Sharps and her worship mayor Clark.
Yeah.
Because Mayor Clark wanted some motions to come forward. And councillor Sharps was keen to to make those motions. And she basically said, yeah, just kind of use your wording. And the mayor bounced back and forth between the computer people who were typing everything out. And it was, it was quite humorous. It was good to see them working together on that. But there, the councillors that did speak about it said that, some of them admitted that, yeah, they needed some education on it. But it was mostly for the viewers, for the the citizens to understand the various reserves. And I think it's definitely a good thing to have out there so that we understand where all the money is. Because the budgeting process is horribly painful to watch. And it takes a determined eye to go through it.
Yes.
And somebody who can type out a lot of questions, because it's not all clear. There's several types of or sorry, parts of the budget. So like an operating one, and then we have our our reserves. We have debt where we, we buy things on debt. And then the interest winds up going back into our operating budget the the next year or whatever, or once, once the debt's been incurred. And just on that, there was, you know, I know I've been harping on, we, we blew the budget within an hour and fifteen minutes with four point one million dollars. But good old city council, you know, the the little engine that that could did kind of finish off one of your favorite topics and one of mine as well, tin can alley. So
Yes.
So they, they, they did rip out the 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 sea cans, the pods, just before the, whatever the the sale festival that they have just before Christmas downtown.
Yeah, they came out, I think, so around December tenth.
Yeah, so the the timing was immaculate. But at this past council meeting, they, they killed the twenty twenty-three budget of, I think, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, for the washrooms.
For the washrooms, yes. So I know we, people often joke as you pass Brooks, that there's the million dollar toilet that was built in the near highway thirty-six there.
Right.
Which you can only really access if you're heading west. So we were only gonna be half as bad. And and that, that was actually, that motion to delete that funding was passed unanimously. There was some interesting discussion about it as well. And there was a survey done that was in the agenda packet from local businesses talking about bathrooms are still needed. And there was a question about whether is it the need is real or perceived, because there are bathrooms at the bus terminal, which is essentially two blocks away.
Yeah.
So the, the percentages of the people that were polled downtown still showed, I think, fifty-nine percent felt that there was still a need. I'd have to look through it. But there was different questions asked of have they seen people using, I guess, the back alley probably for the for the bathroom? So it is a still an issue. And whether it's signage or the police patrols or whatever is gonna happen, it's, it's still going to be an issue downtown. And it was very interesting because the mayor, she did talk about and I can't remember exactly what she said, but it's like, it may not always be the, the town square that they, they could still sell it in the future. So
Yes.
To me, that sound is like, people are starting to say, well, maybe it wasn't such a good idea. Maybe it wasn't so well planned out. And, you know, with the pods gone, we do have a better parking lot for sure.
Yes.
I think the environmental side was was cleaned up. So it does make it more sellable. The the grants that they got from the government of Canada, I think, probably have about a year and a half, maybe two years left on them. So and I think some of that, or maybe most of that went to the pods or the the sea cans. So potentially if, if things change, we could, we could do something else with the town square. I'm not saying that we should. But it was interesting to hear that from the mayor.
Yeah.
So.
I think if I remember rightly initially, I mean, going back now to the last year of the previous council in twenty-one, their intent, albeit sadly it got away from, was to remediate that corner. Apparently they were contamination issues and one thing or another. And that was their whole intent to clean it up, beautify it, let the federal government, the provincial government pay for it. And then in probably twenty-seven, put it back up for sale to a developer to do whatever.
Yeah.
But I think most people are quite happy to leave it as the parking lot it is with the canopy for inclement weather, if there's some kind of a festival downtown.
Yeah, and I think like we saw the city was pushing hard, spending money to promote the town square. And I think one of the things we we found is that, and I think councillor Sharps spoke about it last fall, or or maybe it was last spring, that, you know, renting the town square as opposed to renting the park, the park was much, much better.
Yep.
You know, it had the trees, it had the grass, you know, the bouncy castles, whatever vendors wanted to go there. And obviously, the the sea can pods were were next to useless. It, it, it still blows me away that, you know, they didn't recognize that they were gonna be too too difficult to control the climate in them, because they were either too hot or too cold. There was never really a, a time when, you know, the the weather outside would allow them to be used comfortably, because they, they either needed to have air conditioning added or heat for, you know, seven, eight months of the year being Canada. So is there a possible redesign of of town square to make it more useful, less of a parking lot and more of a a town square? I don't know. It, I just thought it was very interesting that she brought that up.
Yeah.
And I think
Yeah, because her concern, I had the impression like towards the end there that Mayor Clark had a concern that there weren't enough bathrooms downtown.
Yeah.
Not sure what the standard is. I mean, I know, you know, commercially in the industry, for every X number of employees, you have to have a washroom. But I'm not sure, I'd have to see if I could dig it up if there is a standard, for a better word, for
Well, they, they, that was brought up too. And but I thought it was, it was very interesting because it was probably over a year ago. And I think it was, again, councillor Sharps brought up, that's like, well, let's just open up city hall's bathrooms. And she was, some staffer was, was there. And there's a lot of pushback on that, like, you know, we don't want the filthy masses in city hall. Let's, you know, push them elsewhere. So but I, I think for town square, for, for the city of Medicine Hat, really, if you want that central town square, we've seen the park being used for just about everything. And, you know, we do have Kinkouli for some of the the big celebrations. So yeah, it'll be very interesting to see. But it's, it was very interesting that we had years of those ugly sea cans. And then we spent money painting them. And then they pointed out that the homeless were breaking into them and, and I shouldn't say homeless.
Vulnerable sector.
Yeah, I don't even like that term technically. But those who are not willing to conform to civil society were doing those things. And the police would have to intervene. And then there was cleanup costs and repair costs. And and now it's cleared away. And, you know, that there was a mention that we could sell this again in the future. So be very interesting to see what happens with that.
And the next city council is December the, no, not December, January twentieth. I'm still getting used to the clock because we had January sixth, next one will be the twentieth.
Yeah, it'll be interesting. There was an article in the Messnet News where the general manager of the Messnet Exhibition and Stampede talked about the funding that they've been requested and whenever we're gonna get an answer on that. And I thought and obviously you'd never get the full quote. So, you know, I'm not gonna be too critical of it. But at their last presentation in the fall, there were questions put back to Messnet Exhibition and Stampede. So will they come back with those answers? Because they did point out the, they had a some firm did an assessment of how much money they'd have to make
Right.
in order to make the business viable and pay back the zero interest loan over, I think, twenty-five years, thirty years? I can't remember.
Twenty-five was bandied.
Yeah, and I think that was a seven million dollar loan plus, I think, fifteen million dollar grant that they wanted from the city and and the same matching grant from the province. But councillors and possibly even the mayor, I can't remember who asked, but they, they asked about all this money that they need to raise, all these They, they asked about all this money that they need to raise, all these, uh, bookings, um, for use. Um, do they actually have a business case that, that, that they can do that? Not just that they need to do that in order for it to make it. And will that be new business coming to Medicine Hat? Or will they be taking that business from other, uh, local establishments that, that provide the same services? So I think they need to come back with those answers. And if they don't, I don't think there'll be any movement on it. Um. And nor should there be. There's, there needs to be an answer on it. Um.
Yeah. Cause I mean, any manager going to his senior. Supervisor, if he wants money, okay, why? How are you going to pay it back? And where's the return on the investment? That's, that's just good business.
Yeah. And those are questions in open council. Um, obviously we won't know what literature has been sent back and forth communications and. And hopefully there's been formal communication, uh, by written letter between, uh, the city and, and the Messnet Exhibition and Stampede. So that, uh, they can articulate those questions, uh, and maybe add to them that were, were done in, in council. On paper, because it's, it's hard to remember. I don't even remember who was, uh, put forward those questions, uh, but they were good questions for sure. I think. Uh, I think it's important to answer that because if we are, uh, going to give $15 million grant. Uh, and we are going to have a zero interest loan that's going to cost us, I think they said about three million in interest over the, the term. Um, we're kind of picking a winner if they're taking business from other businesses. If it's businesses from outside of Medicine Hat that are losing out, which I'm not sure how that makes sense. Um, then it's, you know, we're taking care of our taxpayers. Um, but I think it's, it's a critical questions that need to be answered. And, and frankly, the shells are bare.
Yeah.
Uh, at the city of Medicine Hat. So we need to really do the due diligence on this. And, uh, I, I will, uh. I rarely applaud council for, for being fiscally prudent because they generally aren't. But in this case, I think they recognize that, uh. This is a significant investment. $15 million is actually bigger than our current deficit. Not very much frankly, but still. It's, uh, uh, money that would probably come out of our reserves.
Yeah.
Which one we'll learn, learn when we get this education. But anyway, our, our non-restricted or unrestricted. Um, but that, uh, zero percent interest loan, um. You know, that, that'll be an interesting one because the interest on that, uh, that we lose out. Um, you know, that's almost free money, right? You know, that's, uh, where does that come from? How does that get applied or, uh? Is it, is it just an opportunity lost? Are we going to incur debt because of that? Well, you could say, no, we'll just take it out of reserves, but. Then that $7 million is not available in reserves for something else that we may have to take a loan for. So.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's, it's gonna be tough. Yeah. And I think, uh, you know, I think all the councillors are pro halo. I haven't heard anyone say anything negative about it. We also have the, uh, the women's shelter and I don't think they've come up with a number yet.
Not yet, no. I've heard numbers bandied about in public.
Yeah. And obviously, uh, that's something that's probably an errand dear to, to most of the councillors' hearts, if not all. And, uh, you know, uh, there's going to be a lot of pressures this year and.
Well, the other big issue that's going to come up here very soon too is the mustard seed. Right? I mean, that's a minefield.
Yeah.
Um, the town hall they had at the public library, um. The citizens of the community were extremely passionate. About the issues that affect them. And I, and I can see why. I can, I also understand the difficult position that the mustard seed is in. Because they were asked to do it at the last minute by the province because the Salvation Army just couldn't do it anymore, which was fair enough.
Yeah.
Um, and they're asking for time and patience. For the mustard seed in cooperation with the Medicine Hat Housing Authority. Um, to find a location. The one thing I thought was interesting is they talked about a matrix. And this has come up at city council quite a few times. What's the matrix? Uh, community funding, right? If you're. A neighborhood group that wants to do a gazebo in one of the city parks, there's now this matrix. That they have to follow and check all the boxes to, so they can compare the funding amongst the different groups. Um, the stampede is exempt from that because they asked earlier. But I tried to find a matrix from any of the other communities in Canada. And there was kind of one out of Penticton. Uh, but it was pretty much weasel words. Um, but I couldn't find it like. Um, who was it? I don't know if, I think it was Jamie Rogers. She said. We have a matrix and the number one is not in a residential area. And that's what piqued my interest in the matrix. So then if it's not in a residential area, where's it going to be? Light industrial or heavy industrial? And then the whole conversation got into transporting their clients. Between their services downtown and wherever the location is. And I mean, I've already heard. And I believe the true stories of vandalism in some of the more isolated. Uh, locations in town, copper theft, graffiti, um, broken windows. So I, I don't envy. The city, the mustard seed and the housing, uh, community housing authority in trying to come up with a solution to this.
Yeah. And, and you know, I think, uh, uh, we can commend them and be grateful to the Salvation Army and to the mustard seed and, and to all involved for, for trying to. Uh, provide solutions and, and certainly historically help people. Um, but I, I can see how, uh, people get their ire up that. We're spending money to help people to shelter them. But, um, as soon as they step outside, they, uh. You know, they basically civily, they're, uh, they're destroying the neighborhood.
Yeah.
They are, you know, whether it's drugs, uh, they even talked in, in the, uh, news article, um, about, uh, sex.
Promiscuity and human waste.
Yeah. And so, you know, we're putting these efforts in to help, um, people that, you know, in, in a lot of cases, don't seem to want to be helped.
Yeah.
Uh, they, you know, they want to be warm and fed and, and, and those are important things, but they don't really care about anybody else. And so I, I can understand why people are upset. I mean, the city just did a rezoning bylaw. I think it was the first, uh, meeting in December. And it was a, an empty house. Uh, was it second street?
Yes.
And, uh, sorry, an empty lot, uh, former house there and, and, you know, we've got a traditional neighborhood. And they voted in for a nine-plex. So, you know, if, if you think about it's like, oh, okay. Well, it's nice to have a neighbor, right? But is it nice to have 18 to 25 new neighbors in this, this nine-plex? And did they reduce, uh, those people's taxes? Because obviously their land values are going to go down, their property values, like. Who wants to buy a house next to a nine-plex? Right? So, and then now we have a shelter. And we don't want it near, uh, um, residential areas.
Yeah.
Why? Because it, it damages, destroys the fabric of those. But what does it do to those businesses? That employ people and they have to walk over the drug needles and, you know, the, look at the graffiti or worry about their, if they're working night shift. That their car is, uh, going to be vandalized. And, and, you know, I, I had that in, in my, my, my current job. My, one of my partners. Uh, goes out to drive for the night for work and he comes back and they punched a hole in his gas tank. And that was the seventh one in, in about a month. Um, and, you know, that's 3,500 bucks.
Yeah.
Right there. Uh, very simple things and he, he had almost no gas in his tank anyway. So they probably didn't get anything. And a very dangerous thing as well, right? And these are the kinds of things that are being perpetrated by the people that are being housed, right? And it, like, the real issue is. That there's crime. We're bringing crime wherever we're putting that. And we're either not having enough enforcement. Or enough, uh, punishment to prevent it or, or, or rehabilitation. So I think these things need to be answered before they, they get moved somewhere. It's like, okay, so what are you going to do? To protect either this business area or this residential area or whatever area it's going to be, uh, when you put these people there. And then we're talking about. Instead of solving that problem, oh, we'll just bust them or transport them by van, increasing the costs.
Yeah.
And increasing the money that needs to be either granted by government or donated by concerned citizens. So we need to start facing up to the real problem and not the, uh, the side effects of the problem. And just kind of polishing that turd and then carrying on.
Yeah.
And I can understand why they're upset. And, uh, there were some pretty, uh, strong remarks. Uh, that were in the paper and, and one included war. And that's very concerning when people will say that type of thing because. You know, they're at their wits end.
Yeah.
And, you know, I can't sell my property to get out of this problem because I'm going to lose money, uh, on my house big time. And, uh. Yeah, I can just see how these people are trapped by government decisions.
Oh, lack of.
Yeah. Well, it's usually the decisions that they make that they screw up. Yeah. But.
And that, it is a concern. I'm see, I. It's a concern for me that I'm seeing more and more, uh, civil frustration. With these petty bureaucratic tyrants making these rules and regulations. But nobody can challenge them because they're behind locked doors or in a different province.
Well, and again, this goes to three levels of government. So you have a government that, uh, has not been tough on crime.
Yeah.
That has actually made it even worse for everybody. We have, uh, the bail issue that they, at the federal level of government caused. Um, and I don't think that's been solved at all. And, uh, you know, with the, some of the experiments that they've done with drugs in B C, decriminalizing. Um, and just, uh, you know, the, the lack of care that it's the provinces and the cities that have to deal with these issues. And, and then you have, uh, competing values of rehabilitation or incarceration. And, uh, we certainly aren't doing the incarceration. Uh, we are spending money on the rehabilitation. It'll be interesting to see. What the recidivism is, uh, if it does clean up a lot of these things. Uh, it's, it's a difficult thing to do. Um, but I can see why these people like, somebody drops a drug, uh, house essentially. And yeah, they can't do drugs in the house, but they can do it all around the neighborhood, but they can sleep in the warm house. Um, yeah. The effect to me is my property values. I'm worried about, uh, the, the safety of my family and I'm worried about picking up, uh, all kinds of. Uh, illicit litter from, uh, the various sins that are committed. And worried about being robbed or broken into and damage to my house and property, vehicles. It's, uh. It's a major issue and it, uh, I, I think. The, the citizens involved would probably be a lot happier if all of the level of governments condemned what's happening around these places. Instead of, uh, brushing it off and it's, uh, more important that we take care of these people who are causing all of these social ills.
Yeah.
So we can certainly help them, but we need to stop the crime. We need to stop the, the destruction. I mean. Like you see in, in, in parks, needles and all kinds of other stuff, used condoms, all that kind of stuff. Uh, all kinds of garbage and litter.
Yeah.
We see it in our, our ATMs. All of the ATM vestibules downtown are locked after hours and on weekends. And it's not because, you know, they can't, you know, that they don't need the business. It's because the damage that they do. And the filth.
Yeah.
And it's, it's disgusting to go into some of those places, whether, and I've seen crack pipes and all kinds of other stuff in there, garbage. And, uh, it, we are allowing a small portion of our population to destroy our good civil society. And we need to take on that.
Yeah.
Um, uh, headstrong, as strong and as hard as we are taking on sheltering them.
Yep. For sure. Alrighty.
End of rant.
Pleasure talking to you as always.
Yes.
Thank you for watching.